All right, let's call the order to Sparks City Council meeting for January 27th, 2020. Just so you know, the mayor is getting his cats, uh, eight cat scans. He should be here any minute. Not getting his cat scan. I asked him what was wrong with his cat. He's fine. Um, and he'll be here shortly, so I'm gonna get us started. So, Madam Kirk, let's start with a roll call.
Mayor Smith is absent. Mayor Protem Lawson.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Crutts.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
All right, will you stand please for our invocation with Pastor Brian Smith?
Let's pray. Lord, I thank you for this day, and I thank you for this city that you have us living in. I thank you for this time and this place. Lord, uh, the good things that are happening, and Lord, the things that are, areas of struggle that are being handled. And God, I lift up in our community, um, families. Lord, I pray for the health of our families. God, I pray that families would remain whole, that families would, um, pursue healing, and that there would be joy in families. I lift up, uh, the elderly. And I pray that we would be a city that would care for our elderly and engage them in ways that are, uh, life-giving. God, I pray for our children. Lord, I thank you for our schools that, uh, are educating our kids. I thank you for the programs that are caring for kids that are in tough places, and I thank you for the laughter and the joy that we see in our children. And God, I lift up those places in our community that are struggling, or the addicted, the homeless, uh, the unemployed. God, the decisions that are made in this room are so incredibly vital for our community. And so, Lord, would you give, uh, our folks wisdom, our city council wisdom, our mayor wisdom? Lord, I pray that this meeting would be a blessing to you, and the meeting after the meetings, it always happens. God, would those be life-giving as well. It's in the name of Christ who we ask these things. Amen.
Amen. And then please stand for the pledge. And since we don't get visitors from Reno too often, Grant, you wanna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I will. The pledge consists of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. I see the mayor is here, so, uh... So we'll, uh, I'm gonna start with Grant, uh, public comment, and you are up first.
So, I'm Grant Detton. I'm the founder of the Karma Box Project. Uh, what it is real quick, if you haven't heard about it, is it's, uh, just a grassroots...
For the record, can you give us your name?
Uh, for the record, Grant Detton. Um, and what the Karma Box Project is, it's a grassroots community initiative. Uh, it was started with recovering drug addicts who wanted to give back to the community. The idea was that we build one box, and, uh, we fill it three times a week with non-perishable food, socks, beanie caps, things like that, uh, hygiene items for those in need. Well, what happened was is the community kinda took over, and they started building them, and they started painting them, and we started placing them, and businesses started adopting them, and churches were blessing them. It was, it was just, it turned into a really big gig, and Carson, um, and Sparks has really been driving the community. Sparks has been driving almost aggressively to get one. And so I met with Neil, and Neil, uh, Neil asked if we can, uh, set one, get one up for you guys. And so, not only do we have one, we have a few, uh, because so many people are getting engaged. Uh, the first box was made by Randy, and Randy's gonna tell you, uh, who, who she represents.
Uh, my name is Randy Vigna. Um, I'm a cheer coach for Sparks Pop Warner. My son plays football. And as a group, they decided they wanted to do something to give back to the community. So, I had reached out. He had said we didn't have any in Sparks, and I was like, "That's our project." So, together we created our box, and we are hoping to get it into Sparks.
Okay, and i- in addition to that, so, like, sometimes I'll have someone build a box, and then sometimes someone else will paint it, and then, uh, agencies and companies adopt it. So I brought a, a couple of, uh, different legs. Um, uh, so, uh, Henry Schein has been backing us up, supporting the, the program for, for so long, and so they actually built their own box, but their box is probably the most creative box ever, and I'm gonna take it, and I'm gonna show it to you. They built it out of a Christmas tree, trimmed the, trimmed the sides. There you are, trimmed the sides, turned it into like a birdhouse. Right? And, uh...
Yeah, I can see it.
Got it, got it. And, uh, and this, and, you wanna give a little history on the box?
So our box, um...
For the record, your name, too.
Robin Delaney.
Thank you.
And I work for Henry Schein, um, and I stumbled across the project, and it really just kinda hit home to me. I thought it was a great, um, way to get the community involved, to give back. And, um, I got our entire company, um, really involved with it. So we've got about 330 employees at our, um, Reno Sparks location off of Rock. And, um, we started filling Karma Boxes before we even had one. Um, and in the meantime, our facilities manager built the box out of scrap pieces. Um, and we're finally nearing completion. Um, we're just needing a spot to place it, and we have adopted the Sparks Marina as our cleanup project. So, um, we already have a sign out there, and I was really hoping that it might be able to go to the marina, um, where we can help keep it stocked, and hopefully it might reach some people who could use supplies there, and we can help bring a beautiful box to your, to your city.
And also, uh, there's Carrie DeMars, uh, Carrie DeMars?
Carrie DeMars, yes. I'm, I'm, I'm here in support of Grant. Um, seeing all these great boxes come up in the community in Reno, and I, I represent Chase International Sparks and also Veterans Association of Real Estate Professionals and the Stop, Drop and Push Campaign, and we just wanna be involved. We wanna have a box. We wanna have the kids make it. We wanna have it creative and just, we wanna, we wanna keep growing this and helping the community in any way we possibly can, and that's what I'm here to do, is support.
And, and this is just a small fraction of the people in this community that are willing to give and to help out and to support and to back up, and it's, it's really cool when you watch, um, everybody agree on something. So, so thank you very much, and, uh, we're looking forward to placing more boxes for you.
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Linda Plachon. Come on down, Linda. Welcome.
Thank you.
And sorry I was late.
Oh, it's okay. It's good finally seeing you in person. Um, my name is Linda Plachon.
Have a seat, Linda. Have a seat.
Former special ed teacher, 34 years, 18 years here in Sparks, Reno. Um, I have an impact statement because I have concern. The issue is lately more RVs, campers, and large boats have appeared on Rosemary Drive and surrounding streets near Catherine Dunn Elementary School. Rosemary Drive is a school zone for Catherine Dunn students, where many youngsters travel daily to and from school. The concern is many of these sports vehicles are parked either on the street or in driveways. They're dangerous because they obstruct the view of drivers using these, this busy street, and other busy streets. It's also difficult to see, for people to see, uh, the youngsters when they're, uh, backing out of their driveways. I have photos, as you can see, here's one photo taken from my house. Catherine Dunn is right behind there, 400 feet from the school. Here's a better shot. This, this camper, and my neighbor's fantastic, this camper, there's the school over here, completely obstructs the view, and we have little kids on razors, we have kids on skates, you know, kids are kids. And I'm so afraid that one of these days, these type of obstructions are gonna damage our children, maybe even kill one. Um, I have to say that Casey from Code Enforcement and Joe Rodriguez from Code Enforcement and Sheree and Brian have done a great job trying to keep some of these vehicles either out of the park, uh, you know, out of the driveways, if they're touching the sidewalk, or ones that are in the street. Um, and they've been very helpful, but they need help because they don't have enough people to actually go out and, and do this all the time. Um, I keep them informed. And also removing, the impact is, removing these sports vehicles from the streets and driveways would greatly decrease the chances of little children on bikes, skateboards, and razors being struck or even killed by drivers trying to avoid these obstacles. Um, there are facilities where these sports vehicles can be stored for the safety of our community. Now, my neighbor has a boat, but it's very small. He's trying to sell it, and it's, it doesn't come up as high as, as this camper, as you can see. I have great neighbors on Rosemary. I'm not, you know, but this is unacceptable, as far as I'm concerned. So what I'd like to see down the line is removing these sports vehicles from the streets and driveways so, to decrease the chances of little children on bikes, skateboards, razors being struck and killed by drivers trying to avoid these. Um, I also think, um, there is a place where they can store these, uh, sports vehicles, um, for the safety of our children and our community. And I wanna thank you for your time and allowing me to voice my concerns for the children, parents, and families of our community, and perhaps in the future, uh, code could be revised to create safer city streets for our s- school populations in their, in our community. And thank you, I really appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna leave this with you. And that's it.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. It's so nice meeting you, Ron.
Nice meeting you, too. We talk all the time.
I know.
Anybody else in, in the audience wishing to speak at this time?
Got one more. Should have Marcy in there, too.
Might have another one in here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sure Marcy wouldn't...
Yeah, you, Marcy's not gonna...
Ah, we're gonna, we're gonna skip Marcy. Come on down, Marcy. Sorry about that. Welcome.
Thank you. Wish we could have these dogs all the time. How soothing. This is great. Um, hi. Um, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Sparks City Council members. My name is Marcy Coofe Smith. Uh, I am a senior, a volunteer, and I'm Secretary of the Sparks Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to give you, um, a quick update on what our super active committee has been doing. Um, for the first time, we had a joint meeting with the City of Reno Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, the Washoe County Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, and our new Sparks Senior Advisory Committee, and we hosted it for the first time in the Sparks Senior Center, and I'm happy to say it was very well attended. And we had several speakers, one of whom was Susie Trinidad from RTC, who spoke about the Flex Ride program that's occurring right now here in Sparks. And she mentioned how well it's being received and how well it's, it's being attended and everything. So that was a really positive, uh, thing, and a lot of the seniors, you know, transportation is a huge concern for them. I also wanted to tell you that our committee is working on events for the upcoming Older Americans Month. Our council member has tasked each of us to come up with an event for the month of May for Sparks. So we're doing that, and, and once again, thanks to Julie Dool, we know we're gonna get the word out 'cause she's great at always getting stuff out for us. Um, our next board meeting is February 26th, and we are inviting guest speakers to our boards. We have Amy Dewitt Smith coming to speak. She is with the Neighbor, Executive Director for the Neighbor Network of Northern Nevada and Four, and her office is in Sparks on Pyramid Way. Um, she's trying to work with transportation for those seniors who are living outside of bus areas. So that's, she's really very proactive with that. And then, um, our newsletter, our committee is doing a two-page newsletter. And I wanna thank, um, Sparks Police Chief Crawl and Sparks Fire Chief Reed. They met with several of our committee members. They are going to help us with a little resource section on our newsletter, who seniors can contact. So we're gonna, that will be something that will always be in the newsletter. And our first newsletter, we're hoping to do it sometime in the spring. We have Councilmember Dare. We have, uh, a little article from him on the Senior Phone Patrol Program, which everybody loves. So the newsletter will be two pages, and that'll be the front. It'll have an article. On the back will be the Sparks Senior Center, the activities that are occurring every month, um, how everybody can reach their council members and the mayor. So hopefully we'll get that up and going, and we did a survey at the Sparks Senior Center. Um, we asked three questions, and we'll bring it to our board. What issue concerns them the most? How would they, what would they like to see our board work on, and how do they get their information? And finally, I want to thank the mayor, the Sparks City Council, and our city manager. I am wearing proudly our badge that they gave our Sparks Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, so we are now official, and they also provided nameplates for us. So, thank you, thank you for being so supportive of our seniors and for our committee. And if it's okay, we'll just keep coming back to you with updates, because we are super proud of, of our committee. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcy. Okay, um, I do have a card, but you wanna talk on 9.6? You wanna wait till 9.6? You wanna talk now? Okay, okay. Uh, anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Come on down, ma'am. Give us your name, and then I'll have you fill out a card. Okay?
Hi, all. My name is Laura Thorworth. I'm here on behalf of the Census. I'm working as the Regional Coordinator for the State of Nevada, doing outreach just specifically to hard-to-count communities in Washoe County, in addition to Carson, Douglas, and Story Counties. I wanted to come by and introduce myself, and also invite city council and the city of Sparks to our Washoe County Census kickoff event. Councilman Dare will be there speaking, and we'd also love to have you all there to represent the city of Sparks and address the importance of participating in the census. I've also got my contact info. I'd be happy to give you, if you wanna meet up, talk about areas that we can make sure we're filling in the gaps that the Federal Census Bureau can't fill, and make sure we're counting everyone that matters in Sparks, which is everyone. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Would you fill out a card for me?
Absolutely. Thanks.
Okay, we'll do this again. Anybody in the, else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Uh, 5.1, approval of the agenda. Anybody wanna pull anything? If not, look for a motion, Mr. Lawson. We have a motion. Look for a second. Ms. Bybee?
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 6.1, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting for January 13th, 2020. Mr. Dare?
I move to approve the minutes of January 13th, 2020.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second? Mr. Anderson?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, 7.1, announcements, presentations, and recognition items. Presentation of awards for the 2019 Hometown Christmas Parade and recognition of staff, volunteers, and sponsors. Tracy, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, council members. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. And Francine Burge, our Special Events Supervisor, will be assisting today. Um, in, uh, early December, I believe the 5th, we had our Christmas tree lighting. That was a big success with a, a good thousand people in attendance. And then on the 6th, we had our annual Hometown Christmas Parade. Uh, so we want to give out some awards, and also a lot of thanks for all the people that made this, uh, event a success. So first, we'd like to start with our 2019 winners. We have for best float, the city council float, courtesy made by our Community Services Department as the best float.
It was pretty awesome.
Zach.
It was. We'll get back to that one in a minute. Um, best business award goes to MVP Ritmo Performing Arts Dance Studio. Not sure if they're here today. Best vehicle was Thompson Garage Doors.
They always get that, don't they?
Yeah. They do.
Well, you have 52 license plates on it. I got the last chance to Charlie on it. It's on my old 52 Studebaker.
Yes, you do. Very nice.
You'd even look good in it, Ron.
No, no. You have to go a long way for you to even look good.
Do we have a radon presentation?
And then our next group, uh, winner for best costume group was Creative Sparks, Sparks Performing Arts. Are you here today? All right, we'll be sure to get these awards to them. Our best animal group, if you might guess, is Sit Means Sit, right behind us here, Dog Training Program. And our best community group award goes to Girl Scouts of the Sierra Nevada. Is there a representative? And our best marching band goes to our mayor's own marching band. I don't know if the coordinator's here. And then lastly, our best overall, uh, award goes to Chase International Real Estate.
I'm surprised they're not here. They were so excited to win.
They were excited, yes. So, we will, uh, make sure to get these awards to each of these winners as soon as possible. Um, along those lines, we'd also like to take this opportunity to thank our, um, a lot of volunteers, our sponsors, and those that provided in-kind donations. So, um, first of all, our sponsors, which helped this event happen, are Nugget Casino Resort, Silverwing Development, Rail City Casino, and Baldini. So, a big thank you to our sponsors for Hometown Christmas. Another, uh, category is our in-kind support. We can't do this without, um, this, uh, these in-kind donations. And at tree lighting, I believe, was Grimaldi's Pizzeria. They provided the cannolis that are free to everybody. And then, uh, Doughboy Donuts, um, provided donuts for all of us working hard Saturday morning at the Christmas parade. Um, Champion Chevrolet and Dolan Auto Group stepped up huge. As you might know, we had a great response of dignitaries wishing to participate in the parade, which then we had to find cars for all of them, and drivers, mind you. But they came through with approximately 24 cars in total to, uh, help us out in this parade. So a big shout out to Dolan and Champion. Um... Some growling, man. Um, Living Stones Church also provides several volunteers to assist us, uh, with, I believe, both the parade and the tree lighting. And they are, they are, um, annually, they provide, um, volunteers. Boys and Girls Club of the Truckee Meadows continues to help us out with the Visit with Santa. Santa's, uh, little stop at the museum. They decorate, and they, they provide giveaways for Santa to give to the kids. And then last but certainly not least, our Hot August Nights. They provide many volunteers to help us, uh, with the organized chaos, if you will, in the staging area of the parade, and make sure everyone's in place and, and, uh, gets out on the route in the right order. Am I talking too long?
Is that my stomach?
He's just like...
Is that you?
He's chatty.
Hi, Chatty.
Oh, Tracy was on it.
Right over my shoulder. And then, um, as we mentioned the float earlier, um, many thanks to Public Works staff. Our, our float maker was unavailable this year due to medical concerns, and, uh, so Francine did an amazing job, um, recruiting. We got old fire truck for Santa, 'cause Santa needed a float. We didn't have a float for the council members, and the Public Works Department really came through with an amazingly creative float, so a lot of thanks to them. Um, the float builders were Charlie Burns, Clint Larson, and Ryan Thran. Also, Eric Mallett assisted us with the Sparks Fire Truck for Santa. And I would be remiss in not thanking Mark Reynolds for the tree decorations downtown, as well as Casey Bond. I hope you agree that downtown was just beautiful this year, but I think the best light display and, and, um, atmosphere that we've had. Um, and then lastly, the drivers. We had to recruit a lot of drivers, as, uh, Doug Thornley's aware, and John Martini. Um, a, a really big thanks to all our drivers. We had Jim Bass, Dan Boatman, Rich Brown, Nick Corona. I'm almost done. I'm almost done. Nick Corona, Jeff Kronk, Julie Dool, Mindy Fog, Mike Genocchio, Stacy Hemmerling, Maurice Holmes, Lisa, Lisa Hunterman, Chief Pete Crawl, City Manager Neil Crutts, Eli Mailey, Assistant City Manager John Martini, um, Armando Arnellis, Chief Jim Reed. Tanya Ramisetti assisted me with shuttling all our drivers back and forth from the, the, uh, the dealerships. We had Mark Reynolds, Kathy Roberts, Terry Shackelford, Vernon Taylor, Assistant City Manager Doug Thornley, Keith Van Slike, Wayne Weber, who we lost. He was MIA, 'cause there was no ca- gas in his car at the dealership. Anthony Wilkinson and Jason Woodard. So we really thank you for this opportunity. To thank everybody, it is a true community effort for a beautiful community event.
It went off great. I thought it was wonderful this year.
Thank you.
Especially with all the help and the cars.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works now has a new job.
Yeah.
The float was awesome.
What do you wanna do?
Photos.
Sure. Okay, 7.2 is the proclamation for National Radon Action Month. Is there somebody here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, come on down. I'll read the, read the proclamation. Have a seat, ma'am. And then when I'm done, you can give us your name and say a few words. Whereas many, whereas many city of Sparks residents don't know about radon, yet know to know, yet need to know for the safety and health of their families, as radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that is the primary cause for lung, of lung cancer among non-smokers and the second-leading cause of lung cancer for smokers. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency estimates 21,000 people in the U.S. die each year from lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure. And whereas radon kills more people than secondhand smoke, drunk driving, and home fires combined. And whereas any home in Sparks may have elevated levels of radon, even if neighboring homes do not, do not. And living in a home with an average radon level of four...
Pickle carries.
Pickle carries. Per liter of air poses a similar risk of developing lung cancer as smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. And whereas testing is the only way to know if a home has an elevated radon level, and testing is easy and inexpensive, and when identified, homes can be fixed. And whereas University of Nevada Reno Extension's Nevada Radon Education Program, the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, and the EPA's support efforts to encourage all City of Sparks residents to test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated levels of radon, and have new homes built with radon-reducing materials and, and features. Now therefore, I, Ron Smith, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim January 2020 as National Radon Action Month in Sparks, Nevada. Would you give us your name and say a few words?
Hi, I'm Susan Howe, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmen and women, for this opportunity to present information about radon and National Radon Action Month again. This is the eighth year you have provided a proclamation, and your support of our program in this area is especially important for all that the proclamation stated. Because testing is the only way to know if a home has a radon problem, and because it's National Radon Action Month, University of Nevada Reno Extension is again offering free radon test kits during the month... University of Nevada Reno Extension is again offering free radon test kits during the months of January and February. And test kits cost $10 after that. Locally, residents can get a free radon test kit at our extension office at 4955 Energy Way and Sun Valley GID at 5,000 Sun Valley Boulevard. Residents can also get a test kit at our last radon presentation at Northwest Reno Library, February 8th at 11:00 a.m. And then I have this map. So, testing is especially important in the city of Sparks, where nearly 10% of homes tested already have radon concentrations at or above the action level. The highest radon level in Sparks is still 73.8. It was found in 89441, where 16% of the homes tested have an elevated level of radon. But 89431 is even higher, at 19.5%. Every home can have a completely different radon level, so my map and statistics, or your neighbor's results mean nothing as far as what your home's radon level could be. Every home needs tested for radon, so I hope you can help pass the word about the free kits and our presentation. For more information, you can go to our website at radonnv.com, or call the Radon Hotline, where myself or Nadia will answer. It's 888-RADON-10. And I have 10 kits with me, if anybody in the audience would like one, and thank you for this time.
Okay, let's, I'll come down and get a picture, and then if anybody wants a radon kit, she's got 10 of them over there. She'll be happy to give me one. Anybody else? Bill, you want a radon kit? Okay, we'll move on to 7.3, Boards and Commissions, and 7.4, Boards and Commissions.
Great. 7.3 is a vacancy that we have on the Building Code Board of Appeals. It is one vacancy. We're looking for candidates who are either registered professional engineers or electrical contractors with a minimum of 10 years of experience. The term is March 31st of this year through the end of March 2022, and applications will be accepted through 5:00 p.m. on Friday, February 28th. I'll come to how we take, take those applications here in, in just a minute. Item 7.4 is for the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. There is one vacancy on the committee for the Ward 3 alternate position. This position runs coterminous with the, with the council member there, so it's a position that would be ending this November of 2020. Applications for that one will also be accepted until 5:00 p.m. on the 14th of February. Anyone interested in applying or serving on any committee in Sparks can complete a community service application available either through the city clerk's office or through the city's website. If you go online, click to thecityofsparks.us, click Government on the webpage, then under Boards and Commissions, click Volunteering for a Sparks Porter Commission, fill out the online application, and hit Submit. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Move on to Consent Items, 8.1 through 8.5. Anybody want to pull one? Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve Consent Items 8.1 through 8.5.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Dare.
I second that.
Yeah, but motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay. General Business, 9.1, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of Appointments to the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. Mr. Crutz.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, and members of the council. For the record, Neil Crutz, your city manager, here today seeking appointments for two positions on the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. The first one is the Ward 2 alternate, and then a Ward 3 appointment. Both of those run coterminous with their electing officials, and we had a series of applicants listed in alphabetical order of Jennifer Denu, Megan Meager, Alan Munson, David Souza, Alan Sterling, and Eric Whacker. And my understanding is that we have a, a, a motion prepared for you all to consider, or you can name whoever you'd like.
Somebody want to make the motion? I've got the names.
Well, why don't you give us the names?
Okay, for the alternate on, in Ward 2 is Eric Whacker. And Ward 3 would be David Souza.
Okay, in our motion, it says Alan Munson.
Sorry.
So, they're moving him from alternate up, and then he'll become the next one.
Okay, so Alan Munson instead of David Souza. Thanks for getting me in trouble again. Okay, who's going to make the motion?
You go ahead.
Move to approve the Alan Munson and Eric Whacker for the positions.
That's good enough. We have a motion. Look for a second. We have a motion. A second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Glad we read that.
Passes unanimously. Thanks, thanks for all you do.
Yeah, I'm here for you.
Glad we could throw you right under the bus.
Yes. Okay, 9.2, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of a Sub, Sub Grant Agreement, AC 5650 with Washoe County. Kevin.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Kevin Jacobus, Battalion Chief. So, what I have for you guys is a consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a sub-grant agreement with Washoe County for the city of Sparks to receive reimbursement for us participating in the Silver Crucible Exercise. It was held on November 12th through 14th in 2019, and the amount is $9,446.56. Just a real quick, brief background on it. Former Governor Sandoval requested a statewide drill to test our emergency preparedness for complex coordinated terrorism attacks due to the Harvest Festival shooting they had down there in 2017. With that, all regional partners participated in the design and implementation of the drill. The statewide drill, throughout the entire state, occurred in multiple locations on the 12th through 14th of November a couple of months ago. We did achieve our objectives of standing up the EOC, exercising unified command and control, and our rescue task force functions. Funding from it came from, top-down, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. They gave us, money is available for overtime, backfill, equipment costs to recoup us. That trickles down through the state and the county, so we're actually a sub-agreement, and we're seeking your approval for acceptance of our portion for reimbursement for the grant. With that, staff respectfully recommends approval, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve the sub-grant agreement AC 5650 with Washoe County allowing the city of Sparks to receive reimbursement for personnel costs in the amount of $9,446.56 for participating in the Silver State Crucible Exercise.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
Second.
We have a motion. A second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thanks, Paul. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Evan. Thank you. 9.3, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of a Construction Contract, AC 5647, for the 2020 curb gutter sidewalk and pavement rehab project bid with Sierra Nevada Construction. Amber, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, members of council, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. I'm presenting today for your consideration a construction contract for the 2020 curb gutter sidewalk and pavement rehabilitation program, project. Thank you. If I can direct you to the map. These are the streets that are included in the project. They're East J Street and East H Street, which are just north of Prater Way, and they go from Stanford to Purbasko. The existing curb and gutter in this area is extremely deteriorated. It's to the point where it's causing issues with the flow of the stormwater runoff. So, these projects involve complete removal of the curb and gutter, the sidewalk, the driveways, as well as a complete rehab of the roadway section itself. The project was identified in the fiscal year 2020 CIP. It was advertised November 27th, 2019. The project was bid December 10th, 2019. We received seven responsive bids, and Sierra Nevada Construction was the low bid at $529,007. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Did you say replace the driveways as well?
Yes, they replaced the driveways to the back of the sidewalk, yes.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
Yep, I'm, excuse me. I moved to approve the construction contract AC-5657 for the 2020 curb gutter sidewalk and pavement rehabilitation project with Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of $529,007.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Anderson.
A second motion?
We have a motion. A second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. We have some issues up here. Okay, 9.4, Consideration. Yeah, down here. Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of a Construction Contract, AC 5648, for the 2020 Street Rehab Unit 2, Tanglewood Drive Neighborhood, with Sierra Nevada Construction.
Mayor Smith, members of council, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. This item is for your consideration of a construction contract, as mentioned, for the 2020 Street Rehabilitation Project Unit 2, the Tanglewood Drive Neighborhood. If I can direct you again to the map, you'll see to the north of your screen, Green Bray. You'll see to the right, McCarran, and the roads included in this project are highlighted there in red. These neighborhood rehabilitation projects replace any curb and gutter or sidewalk or driveways that are deteriorated, and that is decided through a field review, as well as a complete rehabilitation of the roadway itself. The project was identified in the fiscal year 2020 CIP, and it was prioritized through our city's pavement management system. The project advertised November 27th, 2019, was bid December 12th, and we received five bids, with Sierra Nevada Construction being the low bid at $847,007. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
Yep, I moved to approve the construction contract AC-5648 for the 2020 Street Rehab Unit 2, Tanglewood Drive Neighborhood Project with Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of $847,007.00.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second. Mr. Anderson.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. A second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Amber. 9.5 is, you're going to do that one as well.
Yes, sir.
Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of a Construction Contract, AC 5644, for the 2020 Street Preventive Maintenance Project with Sierra Nevada Construction.
Mayor Smith, members of council, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. So, this construction contract for your consideration is for the 2020 Street Preventative Maintenance Project. Again, if I can direct you to the map, this one's a little bit more zoomed out. The streets identified in red are included on this project. The project involves providing a preventative maintenance treatment, a rapid-setting slurry seal to the streets outlined on this map. These candidate payments were identified through our city's pavement management system. With this project, the preventative maintenance program will treat over 1.2 million square feet of roadway. The project was identified with fiscal year 2020 CIP. It was advertised December 4th, 2019, bid December 19th, and we received two responsive bids, with Sierra Nevada Construction being our low bid at $304,030.89. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Amber? Mr. Dare.
I'll just make a motion if you'd like.
Go ahead.
I move to approve construction contract AC 5644 for the 2020 Street Preventative Maintenance Project with Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of $304,030.89.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Ms. Bybee.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. A second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Amber.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.6, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Approval of a Construction Contract, AC 5649, for the Burgess Tennis Court Improvement Project. Brian.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. For the record, my name is Brian Jason, Capital Projects Manager for the city of Sparks. I, I am here today to present to you the consideration for the Burgess Park Tennis Court Improvement Project. The courts, as you can see right here, are on the corner of Pyramid Way and Holman Way, just down the street from, from City Hall. We, these courts have reached the end of their useful life. They've been just crack sealed and, and done the best we can to maintain them, but it's time to replace them. In this particular project, we are going to replace the, the middle court and the westernmost court with tennis courts again, and then the one closest to Pyramid Way, we're looking at replacing with a pickleball court. In the end, we did provide a bid that had an option 1 and an option 2, just as we did for the Parra tennis courts. Option 1 is for the pad system that was installed over at Parra Park, and option 2 is for the asphalt with an acrylic overlay. We did that to try and increase, or increase the competitiveness of the bid from lessons learned on Parra, where we, there's just not a lot of contractors out there that do the pad system. There's also a contributing factor is access. So, at Parra, the, of course, we put in the pad system. The access is very difficult there. You can't really drive asphalt trucks over the sidewalks and the pathways and grass that readily. Whereas here, we're right adjacent to Pyramid Way, where the asphalt trucks can easily get in there. Both systems are, have a longevity of 15-plus years. They're, they're very good systems. So, in this particular one, we actually did not get any bids on option 1, which is the pad system, but we did get two competitive bids on option 2. Sierra Nevada Construction was the lowest responsive bidder at $139,007.7. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Brian, I, I know pickleball is getting very popular. Can tennis players play on pickleball court?
Uh, no. I, I think Chris Cobb would probably be better at answering...
That was my question.
Yeah.
Specific questions on that.
Mr. Mayor, Chris Cobb, Parks Development Coordinator. While it's going to be designed for pickleball and have a pickleball height net, which is much lower than tennis.
Okay.
If you're a young child or something, and you're wanting to learn how to play tennis, be a great court to play on. It, it's, you're going to see tennis players...
Players, you know, they're pretty mean if somebody's on the court.
But, you know, you could see young kids playing there, or even adults. It doesn't prevent them from playing there. It's just a lower and a different net, but having a dedicated net for them for play at this park.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lawson.
I didn't know, understand it. So, it's just the net, the size is different.
And the size of the court, the striping.
That's good enough. If I never played pickleball, I might have to try it.
I'd like to see that, sir.
Make sure we have Remza there.
Alf Swanson, three days a week, sir.
Ms. Bybee.
Brian just had a question. What is our timeframe? Look on that when we'd like to have the work done?
Probably is the weather, weather...
Since it is asphalt, it'll be weather-dependent as it comes in. And obviously, as, as you see this evening, you have, what was it, four or five contracts with S and C. So, hopefully, I'll be able to nudge them quicker than Ms. Sosa can to get them out at the Burgess Courts.
So, we're kind of looking by summer, maybe?
I would think so, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to open up the public. Mr. Abbott, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I like how we put it on the, we were talking about Parks and Rec on the east side, next to the trees, so just to help provide shade for.
Trying to add some additional with the shading there, an opportunity.
It's a good call. That's it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment. Mac Rossi, come on down, Mac. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. My name, Mayor, Council, my name is Mac Rossi. I'd like to make one comment. It's kinda nice to come over here. Reno makes you stand up, so. I'm here as behalf of the many players for pickleball. We thank you for your consideration, and the Parks Department, and you folks to at least designate one court for pickleball. It's a growing sport. They're putting it on cruise ships now, and we have, right now, over 500 players within the county that are playing this and looking for more space, so I do appreciate it. That's basically it. Thank you.
Okay.
I would make one comment, that when I first started playing it, they used the word pickleball, and I go, where in the heck did they come up with that? And the story, the way I understand it is about 20 years ago, up in the northwest, they decided that a couple decided to, they didn't want to play tennis anymore, so they cut their court in half and played it on a shorter course with a little different equipment. And occasionally, the ball went out of the court, and their dog went and got the dog, the dog went and got the ball and brought it back, and the dog's name was Pickle.
Pickle.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the council for action. Ms. Bybee.
I move to approve construction contract AC-5649 for the Burgess Tennis Court Improvement Project with Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of $139,007.0.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Lawson. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you, Brian. Passing unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, 9.7. Discussion, possible direction to the city manager to coordinate with, to coordinate with Washto County's Director of Human Services, the Washto County Manager, Reno City Manager, to evaluate and identify possible improvements for the organization and delivery services for the homeless. Mr. Rundle.
Good afternoon, Jim Rundle, Planning Manager, here to present on this item. The Community Homeless Advisory Board, more commonly known as C-HAB, is a six-member board made up of the elected officials from the Board of County Commissioners, the City of Reno City Council, and the Sparks City Council. Their goal is to provide recommendations and coordinate regionally on issues regarding homelessness. And of course, Councilman Dare and Councilman Lawson represent the City of Sparks on that board. At the most recent C-HAB meeting, Chairman Bob Lucy, Washto County Commission, requested after a significant amount of discussion that the, that the three jurisdictions get together and identify who should be doing what in terms of providing services for the homeless, what should it look like, and who's going to be paying for what. The motion ultimately made by Chairman Lucy requested the City of Reno, City of Sparks, and Washto County Managers get together to address those questions. And Councilman Lawson brought up at the meeting that he doesn't get to direct, or Councilman Dare get to direct, the city manager from the C-HAB, the C-HAB dais, if you will, and that that would be a vote of the Sparks City Council. So that is why we are here today, for the Sparks City Council to get to discuss that item and potentially, possibly direct the Sparks City Manager to coordinate with the Washto County Manager and the Reno City Manager on how to evaluate, I guess, and potentially identify improvements for delivery of service for the homeless. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rundle. Any questions or comments? Mr. Dare.
I have a comment, and then I can make a motion if you'd like.
Okay.
But I just wanna say, I remember when we, when I first got in office, we had this conversation in a budget meeting about this very thing, and it was one of those things that we almost felt like we don't talk about. I mean, that's almost what it was, just that we, it's a hard conversation to have, and the fact that the county's asking for this and that everyone's at the table, I think it's a great move. Obviously, there's a lot of answers we don't know, and a lot of things, and stuff like that, but we do know we're gonna continue to be diligent in what our responsibility is and how we function in our region. But with that said, with that said, I'd make a motion to accept if you'd like.
There's a motion.
So.
You wanna read the motion?
Sure. I move to direct the city manager to coordinate with the Reno City Manager and Washto County Manager to evaluate and identify possible improvements for delivery of services for the homeless.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Lawson. We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Lawson? No?
I would just wanted a second.
Okay. No further discussion, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Jim. Okay, 9.8 is the first reading. Madam Clerk.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2771, an ordinance providing for the conducting and holding of a primary election in the City of Sparks on the ninth day of June 2020, and a general election in the City of Sparks on the third day of November 2020. Identifying municipal offices seeking candidates, authorizing Washto County to conduct the election, and setting the filing fees for candidacy declaration.
Okay, public hearing of this Bill Number 2771 for its consideration and possible approval will be held at the regular city council meeting scheduled for Monday, February the 10th, 2020. Okay, Item 10, Public Hearing, Action Items, we have none. Number 11, Planning and zoning public hearings and action items, we have none, so we'll move on to public comment. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Comments from the Mayor, City Council, and City Manager? Any comments? I know, in the opening. Okay, without objection, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, January 27, 2020, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee.
Here.
Agency members Dare.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Abbott.
Here.
Chief Legal Officer Adams.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Krutz.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 3, public comment. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Item number 4, agenda, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Agency member Dare.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? Agency member Abbott.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay. Motion carries unanimously of those present. Move on to item number 5, 5.1, minutes. Consideration and discussion and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of December 9, 2019. Do I have any corrections, additions, or a motion to approve? Agency member Dare.
Move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Agency member Anderson.
Second motion.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously of those here. Item number 6, 6.1. Consideration and possible acceptance of the report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of November 13, 2019 through January 3, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve? Agency member Lawson?
To approve.
Do I have a second? Agency member Dare.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously with those in attendance. 6.2. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a construction contract, SRA AC-318, for the 2020 Downtown Safety Barricades, Phase 1 Installation Project, Bid Number 1920-015, PWPWA 2020-081, with ANK Earth Movers in the amount of $215,000.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Ms. Sosa.
Madam Chairwoman, Members of the Agency, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. The item I'm presenting for you today is a construction contract for the 2020 Downtown Safety Barricades, Phase 1. You may recall this map. If you recall, the purchase of the equipment, the safety equipment, the in-ground barricades, and the removable and fixed bollards was approved by this agency December 9, 2019, and this contract represents the next step, the actual installation, the construction of the in-ground barricades and the bollards. So to direct you to the map that's on your screen, you'll notice that this contract represents everything represented in red. So you'll see the pop-up barricades, those are the in-ground ones towards the intersection of Victorian and Pyramid, and numerous other red circles representing the removable and fixed bollards. This was a description, kind of a picture of what the in-ground pop-ups will look like, and this is a generalization of what the removable and fixed bollards should look like. This equipment was purchased by the city. It'll be provided by the contractor should you approve this construction contract today. The project was advertised December 4, 2019, bid December 18, and the city received six bids. ANK Earth Movers was the low bid at $215,000. A budget augmentation will be brought forward later to augment Fund 3401. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Ms. Sosa, as far as, is this the total project? Do we anticipate further bollards or need for additional safety in the future or for right now? Is this a total project for Victorian Square?
No, it is not. This is Phase 1, so.
Okay.
This is the first one that you'll see, kind of learning the, learning the products, learning how they work, also seeing how our downtown continues to develop, but there are future phases of this project.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other questions? From the agency members, I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by agency member Smith. Do I have a second? Agency member Abbott.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item 6.3. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a professional service contract, SRA AC-319, with Christie Corporation for preparation of construction drawings for the realignment of a portion of Avenue of the Oaks, south of Victorian Square Movie Theater, in an amount not to exceed $90,900.
Thank you, Chairperson Bybee.
Thank you.
Agency members, John Erickson, City Engineer. As you can see up on the screen, we are proposing to realign Avenue of the Oaks, basically going through where the existing fountain is. You know, the existing fountain has really reached its useful life, plus, but it's very costly, just due to the fact of the treatment that we have to do to the water. You know, just, it has to be very sterile, and so it makes a lot of sense to realign this portion of Avenue of the Oaks with the potential of a development to the west side and the east side of the plaza. It just gives us additional room for special events. We've reviewed the scope and services provided by Christie Corp staff as recommending approval of the contract. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Mr. Erickson, so this is just for the services to provide the, this doesn't include any construction, it's just the drawings and the engineering that needs to be done for the work that will come later?
That is correct, yeah, and that we're anticipating that work to potentially start as early as late summer, early fall of next year, but again, we're waiting on the developer to come up with their plan, and so we'll react to their schedule.
Okay. Do I have other questions? Agency member Anderson.
I did have a question. Are we gonna be doing anything at that time with the bottom part of the horseshoe, or is that gonna just stay, stay the way it is?
That will come out altogether. Again, we want to get this portion designed and constructed prior to any of the development occurring within the plaza, because we also have access into these buildings, and there's, there's commercial on, you know, within the development in front of the movie theater, so we want to make sure that they have access during the course of construction to the south.
Agency member Dare, questions?
I'm ready to make a motion when you're ready.
I got a question real quick. John Har, this is just for the drawing part of it, right?
That is correct. It's just the construction documents.
So we'll see in our meetings what the drawings look like when they're done. That's all I needed. Thank you.
Okay. Agency member Dare, you ready to make a motion?
Sure. I move to approve professional service contract, SRA AC-319, with Christie Corporation for the preparation of construction drawings for the realignment of a portion of Avenue of the Oaks, south of the Victorian Square Movie Theater, in the amount not to exceed $90,900.
I have a motion. I need a second. Agency member Lawson?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to item 6.4. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a purchase of parking stall counting equipment and software from Q Free Parking Solutions, including installation for the Victorian Square Parking Structure in the amount of $119,493. Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, John Erickson, City Engineer, for the record. This is a really exciting project. I had an opportunity to go down to Las Vegas on Friday to look at a system that's exactly what we've scoped out for this garage. Again, for the, for the 2 million people that are out there in TV land, we're going to be putting level counting equipment and software in the Victorian Square Parking Garage. What this will do is this will tell the folks that are coming to Downtown Sparks where we have a brand-new garage, from what I understand, that it's only been there since the 90s, but it will also provide what's available for parking on, per level, and then there will be signs that will be located at the entrances coming into the garage that will show what the existing parking availability is. Exhibit of that. So this is what folks will be seeing as they drive into the garage, something similar to this, be based on the four levels of parking going into the garage. Interesting thing is, is this is real time. When I was down in Las Vegas, you could actually see the parking counts change as people were coming in and leaving, so it's, it's real time. It's really exciting stuff. And then we'll also have signage on the interior of the garage, and so it will show a sign for the level, the next level up, what's available on that next level. There will also be a, an app that people will be able to download onto their phone and be able to monitor that, you know, obviously where the garage is, plus what's available, as well as we'll be able to post on websites information with regards to the availability of parking. Real excited about the project. We're hopeful to have it installed prior to the 4th of July, but I'm hoping that we have that done prior to that. We've got a local electrical contractor that's gonna be working with the Q Free folks, and so I'm hopeful to have this done sooner than later, but, but again, end of June is what the schedule is on their proposal. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I just have to comment what, how much I appreciate your work on this. I mean, I think it's a great addition. I think we've struggled to try to get the word out that that old garage that we renovated that has 700 spots is still there, because people don't see it anymore. It's between, behind all our construction. So I think the app, too, and then our social media to really make an awareness of the garage, but I think being able to really see, especially during special events, are there parking spots there? How many? What floor am I gonna have to go to? I think it's, it's a great project. Really appreciate your work on that. I think it's gonna make a big change to hopefully utilizing the garage and people being happier with knowing that there really is parking in Victorian Square.
Or when there's not, you know, when you get stuck in that garage and you have to drive all the way back down, it can be very difficult and frustrating.
Exactly.
So hopefully, we're gonna relieve that.
Do I have questions or comments? Agency member Abbott.
Yeah, is there a renewal fee per year for some new software?
No. What they'll do is, you know, they provide their services if we run into issues with their software or what have you. What they'll do is they'll, they'll come, they'll VPN into our network, work through any bugs that they may have, so that's all free. Um, the, the, basically, the equipment is on warranty for one year, and then after that, that would be on our nickel to, to maintain.
Got you.
Yeah.
So, I guess in five years from now, they're, they'll give us free updates if there's things that change, it's one-time expense.
Cool.
Well, besides replacing, yeah. Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion? Agency member Abbott?
Um, I move to approve the purchase of parking stall counting equipment and software from Q Free Parking Solutions, including installation for the Victorian Square Parking Structure in the amount of $119,493.
I have a motion, looking for a second, agency member Anderson?
Second motion.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. And, uh, Item 6.5, discussion and possible action to direct the Chief Administrative Officer to review and propose amendments to the Victorian Square Development Plan, a component of the Sparks Town Center Redevelopment Plan, to update and revise the development program and plan for Victorian Square, including the height of structures adjacent to Victorian Square Plaza and the function and design of the plaza. Mr. Arnellis?
Chairwoman Bybee, members of the agency board, I am Armando Arnellis, the Assistant Community Services Director. So, uh, this agenda item asks you, the agency board, to direct the Chief Administrative Officer for the agency, Mr. Krutz, uh, to initiate amendments to the Victorian Square Development Plan, which is a, basically a subcomponent of the Town Center Redevelopment Plan, that's the plan for the entire redevelopment area. So if I may have your ring, please. The Victorian Square Development Plan, which was originally, uh, adopted as a, as a subcomponent of the redevelopment plan in 2005, and then was amended again in 2015, is for, uh, an area shown on your screen now, uh, the eastern boundary is, um, Victorian Plaza Circle or, or 11th Street, uh, the western boundary is 15th Street, um, Avenue D on the north and Victorian Avenue on, uh, the south. Obviously, much has occurred, uh, just since 2015. Three projects have been completed, uh, of significant scale, uh, the first is, was Fountain House, uh, which includes these two blocks, if you will, as well as the, the two pads in front of the theater, uh, and then, uh, the Bridges Project, which is on these two parcels, and then Square One, which is, uh, off the screen here to the right. And then, um, we have two more projects that are currently under construction. One is on the parcel here to the west of Fountain House, uh, where the atrium is being developed, that's a 131 apartments, I believe, and then, uh, off to the screen to the east is, of course, the deck up, uh, which is, uh, the old C Street Garage site. So there are really two reasons why we're asking you to, uh, give us direction to amend, uh, the plan at this time. Uh, first, from, uh, private development perspective, um, of the remaining parcels downtown, um, four of them are here on either side of the plaza, you have these two on the, uh, east side of the plaza, the two on the west side of the plaza, uh, all four parcels are owned by Silver Wing Development. And Silver Wing Development is planning a project, uh, that would include ground floor commercial uses, uh, facing the plaza, probably primarily retail, but some office as well, and then, uh, structured parking above that, as well as multifamily apartments above that. Uh, all of those uses are allowed, and, or, if you will, comply with the, the current, uh, approved plan, however, uh, the scale of what's being contemplated by Silver Wing Development is substantially taller, uh, than, you know, the language we use in, in the, uh, development plan for, uh, these parcels adjacent to the plaza, which anticipated something in the two-to-four-story scale, maybe three to four stories. Uh, Silver Wing Development is, is contemplating something in excess of 10 stories, uh, and so obviously that's a material, uh, difference between, uh, what's in our approved plan. Secondly, um, with all of this development has occurred, um, and with the addition of so many new residents downtown, um, there's a need to consider the public room, which is really the plaza, and, um, you know, as a lot of downtown has been redeveloped, is the largest, uh, public space that's, that's left, uh, as, as a public space. So, you know, you could look and start to look at this as, uh, as a neighborhood, uh, where there may be a need to consider some, some uses, uh, that would really be intended to, um, be for the everyday use of people downtown and people from throughout the community. Those things could include a public art component, uh, some, uh, the addition of either natural synthetic turf, uh, perhaps, um, a children's play structure or a dog park, uh, and, uh, as Mr. Erickson was describing, uh, with the proposed realignment of Victorian, uh, I'm sorry, of Avenue of the Oaks through here, uh, there's going to be some additional plaza area that will need to be, um, designed and, and programmed. So, uh, for these two reasons, uh, we think it's appropriate at this time to initiate an amendment to this, this plan. Uh, if the agency board gives the, uh, Chief Administrative Officer that direction, then staff will develop one or more options that we will then, uh, reach out to stakeholders with, um, and everyone from property owners and business owners downtown, to organizations like 39 North, um, some of our, um, commissions, like the, um, the Arts and Culture Commission. Uh, and then once we have a, a plan that we feel is ready to, uh, go through the, uh, public approval, public hearing process, we will start that process. Again, those changes are anticipated to focus primarily on the height of the structures and what's, you know, how we'll redesign this plaza, if you will. Redevelopment law does have some, uh, specific provisions, so there's, uh, a fair amount of process involved with, uh, the steps to amending the plan. I anticipate we'll go, uh, through Planning Commission, and then, uh, the real, redevelopment agency board will have to conduct a public hearing. Uh, we will note, uh, notice individually, uh, all the property owners that, uh, we feel would be materially affected by the changes of the plan. What we've done in the past is the area between Pyramid and Rock, uh, and Prater and, uh, and the freeway. So, uh, that's, that would be a step, and then the final step would be city council approval. So, uh, that concludes my presentation, and I think this will take at least four months, probably, probably more, to like five to six, uh, and would be the basis also for a possible development agreement with, uh, Silver Wing Development for, for what they intend to do.
Thank you, Mr. Arnellis. A question of, the, the two public meetings, would those come after staff has devised, has worked with the city manager on what the plan will be, or you will be gathering public input as part of the process to, to make those decisions, or once we have the vision of what we're looking at?
We have, uh, we have an on-call contract with a design firm that will help us to, uh, develop a design concept for the plaza, uh, that will be intended to reflect or propose, you know, what the plaza will look like and how it will function and what its features will be. Uh, it will take into account what's expected to happen on the privately-owned parcels on either side of the, of the, of the plaza. Uh, once we have a concept along those lines, then we will start getting input on it. We'll have, I imagine, at least one neighborhood meeting, we'll go out to some of these, uh, to the stakeholders and to some of our boards and commissions, and we'll present it to them, get some feedback. Um, I'm sure, you know, the city council will have an opportunity, uh, informally to, to look at that during that process. Uh, and then I would envision that, you know, we would take that public input and, um, maybe make some changes to the, to what's been proposed initially. Uh, and then, once we have that, that revised plan, that's when we would start the formal, uh, adoption process with the public hearings.
Okay. And, and I do like that, obviously stakeholders and then the community itself to help us as we're looking at, and, and this would encompass the, everything in the red circle there, so we're, I mean, we're looking right now, we know possible, you know, the height for the plaza area, but what you're looking at is for that entire Victorian, what's designated as Victorian Square, on what, um, what height restrictions, parks, all of those other things would be included in the, the whole, the whole area, the whole footprint?
The, well, the, the Victorian Square Development Plan that was adopted, again, originally in 2005 and amended in 2015, is for the area inside the red. Uh, I don't know that, you know, we would be proposing to change everything about the plan, uh, but certainly we see at minimum the need to address what's going to happen in the plaza and what's going to happen on these parcels adjacent to it, in, in particular.
Okay.
Um, you know, the, the character of, of, of what happened here in this area is obviously going to be somewhat different at, uh, with buildings of 10 to 12 stories on either side than at three to four stories on either side. So that was, you know, we saw really the need to, A, to make sure that the public is aware that we're proposing to change the plan and get some input, and then, um, you know, in order to allow, or to potentially allow, uh, for some, for structures that haul, tall, to be, uh, approved, uh, the plan wouldn't need to be amended.
Okay, thank you. Um, other questions? Agency member Dare?
So today, are we, are we trying to have a full conversation or just mainly look at the height, or just the idea that you're going to move forward and come back with stuff? I'm trying to make, find out today what are you looking for?
Today, this is the equivalent in some respects of, uh, initiate, uh, directing the city manager to initiate code amendments, if you will.
Gotcha.
So this, we're just looking for direction to start the process.
Got you.
Yep.
Well, then, that changes my, everything going through my brain, that's good to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion? Agency member Dare?
I'll go ahead and make that motion. So, that's fine. Uh, I move to direct the Chief Administrative Officer to review and propose amendments to the Victorian Development Plan, a component of the Sparks Town Center Redevelopment Plan, to update and revise the development program and plan for Victorian Square, including the height of structures adjacent to the Victorian Square Plaza and the function and design of the plaza.
Thank you. Do I have a second, agency member Lawson?
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Arnellis.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at Item Number 7, 7.1, comments from the public. Any comments from the public? Bill? No? Okay, I'll close. Comments from the public, 7.2, comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer. Any comments? Seen none, we're adjourned.